The Central City Council is now in session as of June 7, 2021. Please rise to the occasion with the pledge of allegiance. Fatherhood is prayer this evening. We ask that you give us the strength to guide us through this meeting. Help us build a better tomorrow for our community. As we come upon next weekend, we will take a moment to pause and celebrate fatherhood. We ask that you praise all those who are fathers and play the father role in the home, as we know is important to child development. And finally, as all those are traveling around this summer, we ask for safety. Please keep our families safe. In these things we ask, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Constitution public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Swain?
Here.
Booth?
Here.
Avon?
Here.
Winkle?
Here.
Jacob?
Here.
Molesky?
Here.
DeBree?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Service Director?
Here.
Lot Director?
Here.
Engineer?
Here.
Auditor?
Here.
We're council here. Before you have the city council meeting minutes of May 17, 2021. Are there any changes or corrections at this time? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. We also have the Civil Service Commission meeting minutes of May 18, 2021, with the Administrative Committee meeting minutes of May 18, 2021, the Finance Committee meeting minutes of May 24, 2021, and finally, the Board of Zoning and Appeals meeting minutes of May 27, 2021. At this time, we'll go to the lobby session. For those of you who would like to join us in the lobby session, we ask that you go to the back of the rooms, a little sheet of paper you can fill out, and it's a sign-in sheet. It asks for your name and your address, and we will take time to let you stand and ask that you go to the microphone, give us your name and your address, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak on whatever topic you choose. And you can choose on multiple topics, just not the same one for more than one time in an evening. At this time, it looks like we do have someone who's gone to our sign-in sheet. If you could please step to the podium, Mr. Rudy Ringwall, state your name and address for the record. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Rudy Ringwall, 31966 Center Ridge Road here in North Ridgeville. And I'd like to address the council on the upcoming sewer project on Center Ridge Road that is going past my properties. I just want to start off by saying that we're not opposed to the sewer project in general, but we are opposed to the fact that many of the properties are going to have to have a forced main in this project. Three of my properties included. So we feel, and I've talked to some of the other people, I think that would have to have forced mains on this, I've also talked to the engineer about this, that we would like to see this project go deep enough, and I know it'd be an extra cost to the city and so on, go deep enough so that everybody goes in on gravity and then have a lift station at Barton Road. Because now you have to stay within the confines of the sewer that's already at Barton Road. And that's going to put a lot of extra burden on property dealers like myself. We have to put in the forced main and so on, which means we have to put in the croc to go with that. And if there's a power outage, if you have a small-sized croc, that means 10 flushes and you're done. So then you have to have some type of generator, something like that. If you put in a bigger one, then you might have to upgrade your electrical system. I've been told that at one of my properties, I should put in a 220-volt pump. These things are notoriously bad. They fail a lot. I've talked to a lot of people. I've talked to a couple contractors who've told me that they fail a lot. You have to get them repaired. So that means one thing to me. I probably have to have an extra pump on hand because if the pump fails, you have to have something, you can't wait to get it repaired because you're not, you know, you're pretty much stuck. So now I also feel that it might lower property values, or at least put a push on it. Usually when you get sewers, you have an increase in property value, but this is not going to do that. I've asked the engineer, but I haven't gotten back from him about how many people are going to be involved in this. I'm just guessing myself, 10 to 12 properties. There are a total of 58 properties between Barton Road and the Westlake City Limits. So that would be about 20%. And I think that is a large amount. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ringwall. We have your information, your contact information. Some of the city or council will reach out to you to follow up further. Thank you. At this time, is there anybody else who'd like to speak during the lobby session? Clerk, are there any correspondence they may give to you? Due to the fact that we are having issues with technology, unfortunately, we don't have Zoom available, so. All right, with that, we will move on to the next portion of our meeting. The Administrator Report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On tonight's agenda under first reading, there's a couple of pieces of legislation I'd like to dispense with the second and third readings and add the emergency clause to. The first one is T-76, a resolution to submit to the electors the question of issuing bonds in the aggregate principal amount of $12,500,000 to provide funds for the purpose of constructing, finishing, or furnishing, equipping a new police station and adjacent storage facility next to our fire department station number one on Ranger Way. Upon council approval, the city will authorize the Lorain County Board of Elections to prepare and place this issue on the November ballot for voter approval. Actually, we did discuss the other day that we can let this go through. We don't need to add the emergency today. We can wait until next meeting, but it's going to come and need the emergency. The other items are T-80. It's an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with ODOT to accept federal funds for the construction of a single-lane modern roundabout at Chestnut Ridge Road and State Route 83. Emergency passage is necessary to meet the deadline of ODOT to accept the funding. And then, I think we're okay with that one. That's it for that. Safetyville, if you didn't notice, our police department is hosting Safetyville this week and next week with over 300 soon-to-be kindergarteners and first graders that missed the chance of participating last year because of COVID-19. If you're traveling to City Hall during this two-week period to conduct business, please watch out for the children crossing Bainbridge Road to Safetyville and other locations at the senior center, police station, City Hall, and North Ridgeville branch library. Our police department does an outstanding job educating our youngsters on various safety topics with regard to traffic, school bus safety, bicycle, pedestrian activity, stranger danger, 911, and drug, gun, and fire safety. Just earlier today, we learned that our city just received the designation of the sixth safest city in Ohio, and that was through SafeWise. They released their 2021 Ohio Safest Cities Report. I'd like to thank our police department and also our residents for being vigilant in reporting suspicious activity. Our street department is working through the street paving list. They are paving Bernice, Sycamore, and Charles. If you're living in the area of those streets, please be patient and cautious as you travel in and around the area. Our summer concerts series is taking place this Sunday, June 13th, Father's Day, a great Father's Day present, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the gazebo. Hear the sounds of the Wixie 1260s, Cleveland's Clear Water Revival, featuring music from the 60s. Movies in the Park, last week was Goonies, and then next, this Friday, the 18th, over in South Central Park Gazebo, is Jumanji: The Next Level, begins at dusk. Both the concerts and movies are subject to cancellation because of weather conditions. For updates, you can visit the park and rec department Rainout Line tab on their webpage. Call the Rainout Line at 440-210-6226. I'd like to congratulate the North Ridgeville trap team on being named conference champions. 61 students will be participating at the state tournament on June 19th, and 31 students qualified for nationals to compete during July 7th through the 11th in Mason, Michigan. And it's okay that they're going to Michigan because they have guns, so it should be fine. And then, I'd like to go into executive session. For purposes of making the chief get out of here a little bit sooner, I would like to do that after T-76 is reading.
Second?
Second.
It was moved by the mayor, seconded by Swain to go into executive session after the reading of T-76. Clerk, please call a roll. Swain?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Avon?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Molesky?
Yes.
DeBree?
Yes.
It has passed a 70-0. We will be going to executive session after the reading of T-76. Mr. Mayor?
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a memo on introduction to your T-81. Does it move on to tonight?
Yeah, we can do that. I'm going to make the motion to add, to dispense with the bylaws and add T-81 under first readings.
I'll second that. It was moved by the mayor, seconded by DeBree to add T-81 to the agenda this night under first readings. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? T-81 will be added to the agenda this evening. Is that good?
That's good. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Safety Service Director?
It's certainly glad to see everybody's face again after 6/2, June 2nd, the governor lifting his mandates. I'm glad that we have an audience here that's live, that we aren't on Zoom. I mean, we would be on Zoom, but it's a good feeling to walk around City Hall and actually see a smile and actually see somebody's teeth. How's that? But that's all I have to report, but it's, I'm glad that a lot of people are wearing masks, which is just fine. Certainly that they want to protect themselves or protect others, but it certainly feels good not to have to wear a mask on a daily basis all the time that you're out and not in your own space. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Safety Service Director. Mr. Engineer?
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of things. I did speak with Mr. Ringwall, and I do have some information for him that I will give with him this week on. The alternate State Route 83 roundabout is scheduled for curbing this week, hopefully tomorrow. If we get rained out, hopefully they can get it in one day this week. With that, once all the curbing is in, they'll be ready to start paving. So if we can get some good weather, we might be able to get that ahead of schedule. Center Ridge Road paving, all five lanes are in, and some side streets are being worked on this week if we can get them in. And there'll be some light timing issues that we'll have to work through after the project is pretty much wrapped up, but we're moving ahead finally.
Great news.
And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Engineer. Ms. Auditor?
I am not going to see you. Thank you.
We also have the audit report, March 2021 financial report. We have the April 2021 financial report, and under other reports, we have the April 2021 police department support card report. We then move on to the council committee meeting reports. We have the administrative committee meeting report dated May 18, 2021, which recommends T-64-2021, T-65-2121, and T-66-2021. Return to council for approval. To accept that report, we need a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the administrative committee report.
Second.
It was moved by Jacob, seconded by Swinkel, to accept that report. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? We then have the finance committee report, which is dated May 24, 2021, which recommends T-70-2021. Return to council for approval.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Avon.
Move to accept.
Second.
It was moved by Avon, seconded by Booth, to accept the finance committee report dated May 24, 2021. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And that will bring us to new business. Clerk, please read the new business.
New business, a request for liquor permit transfer from GAL NR in Unit 5, 33725, Center Ridge Road, North Ridgeville, Ohio, 44039, to Fiesta North LLC, doing business as Fiesta Jalapeno, Unit 5, 33725, Center Ridge Road, North Ridgeville, Ohio, 44039.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Booth.
I'll make a motion that we not require a hearing on this and send it directly to the state for those consideration.
Second.
It was moved by Booth, seconded by Molesky, to not require a hearing for the request of liquor permit transfer. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? And that will bring us to recess.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Booth.
I make a motion to dispense with recess.
Second.
It was moved by Booth, seconded by Swank, to dispense with recess. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? On the first readings, T-76.
T-76, 2021, a resolution determining to proceed to submit to the electors the question of issuing bonds in the aggregate principal amount of $12,500,000 to provide funds for the purpose of constructing, furnishing, equipping, and otherwise improving a new police station and an adjunct storage facility for evidence in the police equipment and preparing, equipping, and otherwise improving their site.
Thank you. This evening, we have North Ridgeville Police Chief Freeman here to join us, going to walk us through the process of T-76. Chief, thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
I'll try to go through these in order as you wish.
Okay.
So I'll go to the first one here for you as you get started.
It's very tough to limit the information, but I just want to be able to convince you that the police department is needed here for citizens of North Ridgeville, give them the opportunity to vote on it. These are renditions. Renditions can change, okay? This is not set in stone, but obviously, this is the next three or four site you'll see is what the police department possibly could look like. When I say possibly, these are renderings. In other words, things could change based upon a lot of different variables, but at least you give an ID, picture in your head. This police department would be located south of the fire department, same side of the street across from the middle school and the high school. Come on in. Just keep going. We'll go to the site plan.
Okay.
The site plan is what I want to touch base on a little bit here. Like I said, the fire station is obviously here. We'd be located just south of there. We would have joined actually a driveway across the street from here. Couple things about the site plan in general. Couple things that attract me to this area. Number one, there's over 3,500 kids in that building three-fourths out of the year. Obviously, on a event, whether it be a fire, whether it be an extreme emergency, five days a week, myself, the captain, and five detectives are in that building. You can have seven guys on the ground in less than 30 seconds, and that's big. A lot of these mass casualty events, we're over with in two minutes, whether it be a fire, whether it be what have you. We can be inside that building. I believe from just talking to school officials, this campus isn't even going to grow more. So ideal. Number two, the city already owns the property. It's a big enough site to grow in the future. I won't be here, but 15 to 20 years down the line, if we need to expand, this area has been left here for the expansion possibilities because I believe in the next 15 to 20 years, you could be looking at 60,000 people in this community very easily. People will say, wow, that's a lot of parking there, okay? It's not just for parking, but it's for an area where you can have a mass casualty event where you get people out of the area. There's three or four entrances, and that's why we connect it to the driveway to the fire department, so you can loop in, loop out. So if you have a triage place there, obviously, that's what that parking lot is there for. Gathering place is somewhere very close to here, so obviously, if there was a mass casualty event, we could drop the injured in that parking lot, and we can start having ambulances come and go, and it's very easy to have accessibility. 2083 is pretty central to the city, but we're still pretty central here, so we can get north, south, east, west pretty quick. And like I said, there's enough land there in the future, if we had to expand 15 to 20 years from now, that we're not locked into a small partial of land. This site has been surveyed. They did boring samples, wetlands assessment, and it's a very buildable site. The wetlands, there's a little bit of mitigation there, but it's very, very limited. We'll talk about the buildings themselves. There would be two buildings here. We refer this, and obviously, it's the police station here, and it's hard to read, but this is a police garage. We'll talk about the building first. The current building we're in, one part is 40 years old, the other one's 27 years old. You've got to remember, this building was used 357, I'm sorry, all year long, 24/7, okay? So this building has been used hard, and we're out of space. I've taken down walls, added walls. There's not much more I can do to make the space adequate for what we need. And like I said, when I started, and this second addition was built on our current building, we had 20,000 people in this city. Now we have 37,000. 300 average house starts a year, we're going to be to 40 grand before we even know it. It's just not feasible to what we need in this day and age. With that, because you're going to have more people on station, you're taking in more evidence, obviously, I'm going to have to hire and house more officers, and obviously, more arrests are going to be made unfortunately, but that's just the nature of my business. And police work has changed. When they built that building 40 years ago and 27 years ago, I started with a yellow, scratch of yellow legal paper and a typewriter. Now we have computers, we have technology coming. Everything's technology. The building's just not suited for our technological needs. This building would be a single-story, no basement, and this gross square footage is about 19,000 gross square feet. I have given you a document where it shows you the different sizes of rooms, where we gain, where we lose, so at least you have an idea where we're trying to grow, where we're not trying to grow. So that's there for your convenience. The garage itself, the garage is, there will be a metal structure with a nice facade on the front, so we're not paying top dollar, but the garage would be used for evidence processing, housing large pieces of evidence like cars. Sometimes we have drug-related issues where we take a lot of big, large items in, like currently in the evidence room, we have a washer, a dryer, I won't get into that, but we take in large items and we don't really have anywhere to put those items. And unfortunately, if somebody gets convicted by a jury of the peers, let's say for a homicide, you have to hold onto that evidence for 25-plus years. So it becomes very problematic. In my operation currently, right now, it's here, there, and everywhere. We house dogs down at the west, and my evidence is in another area of the city. My records are in another area of the city. I like to bring everything home so we can give more efficient operation as well. One bonus of the current police department, if we do vacate, have the opportunity to vacate, our quarters will be, from what the mayor has suggested, will house other departments that are having spacing issues as well. Because obviously, not only is the police department growing, but the building department, the water department, the system. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. President? Chief, thank you very much for giving us the high-level look, and I really do appreciate the sheet that you showed, what square footage you have now and spaces, and what you're looking to gain. I noticed that you have no jail centers.
Correct.
Could you talk about that?
Yeah, going future, we rely more on Lorain County Jail than we have in the past, where housing prisoners, there's a lot of liability, there's a lot of healthcare costs associated with that. So what we do instead of trying to house here, we're trying to use the county jail more often. But what we do want to do is change, currently, we're a 12-day facility, we want to go to an eight-hour holding facility. So if the county jail says, no, we can't take anybody because we're full, we still have the opportunity to get that person to court the next day.
Excellent, excellent. And I see a, you know, large increase in the Sallyport.
Yeah, Sallyport is basically where you drive your prisoners in. Right now, if you get two cars in there, the back car can't get out, or the front car is still there. So it gives us the opportunity, because like I said, I know it's not, we're not a farmer man, we're not, we do a job where we arrest people. I know it's not a pleasant thing to do, but obviously, as the community gets bigger, we arrest more people.
Excellent, excellent. And the office space, you're about doubling that. Is that going to be enough? And as such, are there areas where you can be able to develop rooms for multiple purposes?
Yes. What we're trying to do is almost doing more of an open floor plan where we house detectives all in the same office, and we use the, I guess for lack of better terms, cubicle approach, where you're not using walls. Those walls limit your ability to use that space in the future to change it into something else you can use. Because law enforcement changes so fast. We're trying to get out of the cookie cutter-type rooms where, like I said, if you have a multiple big space, you can change that to move with where law enforcement's going.
Again, thank you for your presentation, and as you mentioned, many departments within the city need more space. You've needed more space for a long, long time.
We have.
And I want to thank you for being able to do all the things that you have done, the spaces that you have, but now is the time that you need to move on.
Yes.
Thank you very, very much.
Yes. And with the community in mind, in other words, we need more interview rooms so the community doesn't have to wait for our services. Currently, we have two. The new building would have five. The lobby in the new PD would be a lot more inviting, where somebody can actually come in, feel comfortable sitting in the lobby where there's no where to sit down. So there's aspects that the community needs as well as they grows.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Any other members of council have questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Avon.
One thing I noticed, somewhat concerned about your locker room and the showers available. Is that enough? Maybe enough for present, but I'm assuming that your department's going to be growing.
We had it built to 60 guys.
For 60 guys?
Yes, and I shouldn't say guys, 60 officers, okay? 60 is on the male side, and I believe it's 20 on the female side. So it is adequate to grow.
And the other thing I think I'd like to see considered too is have the police station resemble more the fire station. It may require a different color brick than that.
I don't disagree, because that was the plan moving forward. Like I said, that's just a...
A rendering, and I just wanted to...
A rendering, yes.
But I agree, your department needs a new facility period.
Thank you.
I really like the whole idea how close it is to school. Obviously, you're a father, a parent, you and you, every day you send your kids out to school, you wonder what's going to happen sometimes.
No, I did the same, I was fifth grader, and like I said, it is what it is. You know, like I said, they are the most valuable asset we have. Just a little bit.
Any other comments? Okay, well, Chief, thank you so much for being here this evening, and thank you for making us one of the safest cities in the country, so.
That has a lot to do with the citizens we work with. We certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
At this time, we'll go to recess into executive session. Your now, the Central City Council meeting is now back in session. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Corcoran.
Thanks, Mr. President. It turns out I forgot to give the reason for going into executive session. It was to discuss the payment of public personnel and the sale of public land. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, we will go on to the next portion of the agenda, which is T-77-2021.
T-77, 2021, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract according to law and in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidder for the construction...
for the construction of sludge process and storage building for the French Creek wastewater treatment plant, not to exceed $250,000.
Mr. Mayor, is this time sensitive in any way? Do we need to speed this one up?
Well, you know, this is that super hot that we've discussed in the past. I believe we can wait until next meeting.
Very good, thank you. T-78.
T-78, 2021. A resolution to authorize the execution of then-and-now certificates by the fiscal officer and the payment of amounts due for various purchase orders.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Booth.
I'll make a motion to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by Booth, seconded by Molesky, to dispense with the second and third readings for T-78. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, make a motion to add the emergency to provide the auditor's office with the resources to pay these bills, which the services have been provided or are being provided. The invoices have been submitted, and they give you the.
Second.
It was moved by Booth, seconded by Molesky, to add the emergency clause to T-78. On the emergency clause itself, and on that clause, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed. It was then moved to adopt T-78 with that emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Molesky?
Yes.
DeBree?
Yes.
The resolution carries unanimously and becomes 1526, 2021.
T-79.
T-79, 2021. An ordinance amending Exhibit A of Ordinance Number 574571, 2008, which provides for part-time, non-union job positions, wage rates, and benefits by increasing the pay rate of part-time labor position.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings for T-79.
It was moved by the mayor, seconded by Booth, to dispense with the second and third readings for T-79. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to add the emergency. The hiring season has already begun. In fact, we're late in the process. We have done a study and determined that our current rates are too low. And in order to attract the employees that we need, this ordinance is needed.
Second.
It was moved by Booth, seconded by Evans, to add the emergency clause to T-79 for those reasons just stated by Councilman Booths. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed. It was then moved to adopt T-79 with that emergency clause in place. At this time, are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Swank.
I'm going to have to abstain my vote from the possibility of the appearance of a conflict of interest.
Doing none, thank you. Any other comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Abstain.
Booth?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Molesky?
Yes.
DeBree?
Yes.
The motion carries with six yes and one abstention. It becomes 5833, 2021.
T-80.
T-80, 2021. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an LPA agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to allow the city of North Ridgeville to accept federal funds to be the lead agency, set forth requirements associated with federal funds to establish the responsibilities for the local administration for the construction of single-lane, modern roundabout at the intersection of Chestnut Ridge Road and Avon Felden Road, State Route 83, also known as LOR 83, 11.019, ODOT PID 114797.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Booth.
Make a motion to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by Booth, seconded by Evans, to dispense with the second and third readings for T-80. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, make a motion to add the emergency so that we can meet the ODOT deadline.
Second.
Council President, I'd like to jump in real quick for a second.
Yes, Mr. Engineer.
Sorry, Councilman Booth. I just want to give a little explanation of what this is. This is obviously going to be a new roundabout at State Route 83 in Chestnut Ridge. Since I started working here, we've been getting a lot of calls about that intersection. Why don't we do this? Why don't we do that? There's been multiple studies done that I've seen down on the shelves. We've done multiple different things there. But we went ahead and had a safety study done, and the safety study done that we had in the spring of last year. We also used that in turn to apply for safety funds from the state of Ohio. Last year sometime, they were giving out a lot of safety funds, projects, whatnot. That project scored very well. We were able to get that. So we were able to acquire or be awarded, excuse me, not acquire yet, but be awarded funds from the state of Ohio for this project. 1.06 million, 1.30 million. So, and our contribution to that is about 3.5, 350,000 approximately. So it's basically an 80/20 split, as most federal projects are. And it's going to be a great addition to that intersection. It's definitely going to make it a lot safer than it is today. It's going to deal with the skew issue that we have. There are going to be some trials and tribulations through the right-of-way process, which you're going to be acquiring some properties on all four corners. But I think through the design process, we'll be able to work all that out and get through the project. So I look forward to it. We're looking for construction in 2024. So it's going to be about three years out still on that. But this is just the start of the process.
Thank you, Mr. Engineer. It's a great, great project. I know that our people made comments over the years, congestion over there, especially in the morning and the evening rush hours. And I know it's trying to turn left over there, it's going to be impossible sometimes, so.
Correct.
It's a nice solution, so thank you.
This, thank you, Council President. This roundabout, in conjunction with our other roundabout that's currently being constructed, will make that whole area just smooth, so much smoother. So I'm looking forward to it.
All right, it was moved by Booth, seconded by Evans, to add the emergency clause to T-80. For the reasons stated, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed. It was then moved by Booth, seconded by Evans, to adopt T-80 with that emergency clause in place. Are there any final comments or questions at this time? Clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Molesky?
Yes.
DeBree?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously and becomes 5834, 2021.
We go to T-81, which was introduced on the floor earlier this evening.
T-81, 2021. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract for the sale of a proposed property split from 5635463 Mills Creek Way.
Mr. Mayor, is there a timeframe on this, T-81?
You know, the issue is, there's a process that we have to go through when we sell public land. It has to offer bid, and we have to wait for the bids to come in. So I would rather get this moving sooner than later.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
We can wait until next meeting. It's not going to change it.
There are no second readings. Bring the third reading, which is T-31.
T-31, 2021. An ordinance amending Section 1240.01 of the Code of Five Ordinances of the city of North Ridgeville, Ohio, known as a zoning code ordinance to rezone the following land, located at 6001 Blairnagle Road, and owned by Slow Pitch Properties LLC, from an ARS2 general residence district to an AB3 highway commercial district.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Swank.
Move to approve.
Second.
It was moved by Swank, seconded by Molesky, to adopt T-31. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Molesky?
Yes.
DeBree?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously and becomes 5835, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, I know that that applicant had waited quite some time to get on our agenda through a number of things that happened. Should we add the emergency at this point?
Unfortunately, there's a charter provision that does not permit us to add the emergency clause to rezone.
Got you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
T-32.
T-32, 2021. An ordinance amending Section 1240.01 of the Code of Five Ordinances of the city of North Ridgeville, Ohio, known as a zoning code ordinance to rezone the following land, located at 6838 Avon Felden Road, and 36046 Center Ridge Road, and owned by JCL Group LLC, from an R2 multiple-family resident district to a B2 central business district.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Molesky.
Motion to adopt. Second.
It was moved by Molesky, seconded by Winkle, to adopt T-32. Are there any comments or questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Molesky?
Yes.
DeBree?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously and becomes 5836, 2021.
Okay, meeting announcements. All city-owned properties no longer require masks, and all city council and boards and commission meetings have resumed back to in-person meetings and are now open to the public. The next regular council meeting will be on Monday, June 21, 2021, right here at City Council Chambers at 7:00 p.m. This meeting is adjourned.
Mr. President, just want to make a note. The mayor had mentioned safety belt earlier. I just wanted to give a shout-out to the Rotary Club of North Ridgeville. They spent a couple of nights there, days, working on getting that all fixed up so that the police department and the kids who are going to be using it have a nice fresh start. So I want to make sure that we do that. Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.